Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, April 20, 2021, and I will call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you are able, please stand and join us in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Due to the ongoing pandemic and wanting to minimize exposure and continue to practice social distancing, we are continuing to offer our meetings via Zoom, which we are allowed to per quote section 21.8.1. With that, is there a motion to approve today's agenda? The moved in second and basal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headen.
Aye.
Now we'll move on to public comment number one. This is this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to make a comment and you're on Zoom, please use the hand function or press star nine to unmute yourself. And we'll wait just a few seconds to see if anyone would like to speak. Seeing anything, Liam? Seeing none, we will close public comment number one. We will move on to consideration of proproclamation for National Crime Victims Rights Week effective April 18 through the 2024, 2021. We have a resolution here. Came from the county attorney's office. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, board. Yes, National Crime Victims Rights Week is a time to renew our commitment to serving all victims of crime, to acknowledge the achievements in victim services and allied professions, and to honor those who have gone above and beyond in their service to others and to remember crime victims and survivors. Therefore, I'm asking the board to proclaim this week as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you. And you've submitted a resolution for us to consider.
And I would ask the board to adopt the resolution.
You want to go ahead and read the resolution first? I'll start. Whereas 20 million Americans are victims of crime each year, and each crime affects many more, including families, friends, and communities. Whereas crime extends an emotional, physical, psychological, and financial toll on victims as they have lost loved ones, life savings, physical and mental health, and often their sense of security has the potential to irrevocably change the course of their lives forever. Whereas more than 30 years of progress for crime victims stand on the shoulders of dedicated advocates and brave victims who overcame shame, isolation, and indifference to gain a voice, rights, and respect. Whereas we applaud the progress that our nation has made in recognizing crime's impact on victims and celebrate advocates and survivors who through their determination brought rights and resources for victims and have changed the course of history. Whereas victim assistance programs across the country are reaching more victims and criminal justice officials are honoring victims' rights more consistently, public understanding of victims' rights remains minimal, and our nation's health service system remains fragmented, underfunded, and uncoordinated.
Whereas more work remains to be done to address the mental health impact of crime and to meet the needs of victims of nonviolent crime, victims of terrorism, and other underserved victims. Whereas our history teaches us that by working together, we can help victims of crime reshape their destinies and ensure that they receive the support they need, the respect they deserve, and the rights they have earned. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Weeks, week April 18 through April 24, 2021, provides an opportunity for us to reshape the future for victims by honoring the past and reflecting on hard-won victories and to recommit to working together to insist on better treatment for victims, to help them overcome the harm caused by crime. And whereas Story County is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Story County, Iowa, and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Now, therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Story County, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18, 2024, April 18 through April 24, 2021, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And we affirm the Story County commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs during National Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims and crime and build a more just community. There are motions to adopt the resolution.
I move we adopt the resolution to proclaim this week National Crime Victims Rights Week.
That's the motion. The moved in seconded, basal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headen.
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing? So I believe Nicole Norton now, her very name, Nicole Norton has been, will be receiving the award of excellence in victim services. Is that right?
Yes, Nicole Norton, she's a Story County Attorney's Office Victim Witness Coordinator, has been selected to receive the Excellent Victim Services Award for the United States Attorney's Office for the Southern and Northern Districts of Iowa. The award honors an individual working in a victim service role that goes beyond expected duties to assist victims of crime. The award is presented annually as part of Iowa's Celebration of National Crime Victim Rights Week. Nicole is a shining example of the quality and excellence of Story County employees who work for the citizens of Story County, and we're very lucky and proud to have Nicole working in our office.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was working in the office when Nicole started and restarted the victim witness program. And she's done a fantastic job and I'm very proud of her and very happy for her.
Congratulations, Nicole. Thank you for all the work that you are doing. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to agency reports. We have a report from Child Serv. I'm not sure if it's Rochelle.
Kate Reynolds.
Okay. Kate, are you there? I thought you did tell her. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning. Sorry, my computer was acting a little weird there. I think I submitted last week our annual report. Did everybody get that?
Yeah.
Hey. Um, I, thank you for having me here today. I have not presented with you all before, so I'm not sure if you want me to just go over some of our highlights or go ahead and just ask for questions regarding that report.
If you do have your report, if you want to just highlight a few things and then leave that open for some questions.
Sure. I mean, clearly, this last year, being in healthcare and working with children, we've been very consumed with COVID. So a lot of our highlights and work over the past year have been working on mitigation strategies with our company's emergency preparedness kind of task force team for COVID-19. And we are thankfully kind of in the recovery phase of services. We also did have effects from the derecho last summer and are in the last phases of some repair work to our playground that suffered some damage during that. And so we've had a year that's been really focused on emergency preparedness and improving our response processes along those lines. We are hoping to begin this summer our respite camp programs and day habilitation camp program that was severely limited last summer, secondary to the pandemic. We were able to secure some space this summer at a church in Slater, and we will be hopefully able to offer full services. The church is large enough to allow us to have appropriate social distancing and a good base of operations for that. So we're really excited about that as well. And probably the last biggest thing is over the last year or so, we have been leasing space across the street from our main location at 2010 Philadelphia. It's in the Liberty Center building. And we did receive a grant through Iowa Workforce Development and DHS just recently to assist us with construction of that space so that we can kind of refit the place in order to increase our Autism Day Health Program, which is a specialized childcare program, and begin to have formalized treatment space for applied behavioral analysis, which is a behavioral health intervention technique for our children on the autism spectrum, as well as expand our outpatient therapy program. So within the space that we're leasing to be able to increase or start all of those programs, which are areas of big need for our community and long wait lists, particularly for outpatient therapy program. And this expansion should allow us to hire up to five more outpatient therapists and significantly work on that waiting list that we have developed over the last few years. So that's kind of a quick overview. Are there any questions for me that I can answer at this time?
Supervisors, any questions? No. I have a question for you, Kate. And were you saying, did you see a reduction of folks that utilized your services over the past year? And has that been picking back up again?
So we did see initially a reduction in all services, particularly in the first few months as people were worried, concerned, unsure of what to do. We quickly pivoted in our outpatient therapy to a telehealth model and did see a return to typical service and in fact, growth in that area throughout the pandemic and continuing. We do still have families that utilize that telehealth service and will probably continue as long as that is an option for us. And we are, our government relations, folks are working on advocating for continuation of that at the state and federal level. Areas that were more community-based are respite, supportive community living, childcare, day health saw a more dramatic impact on their services, particularly anything that has kind of a group setting. So families were somewhat hesitant to bring kids back. And then for our more medically fragile children in our respite services, we did have nursing assessments on a lot of our kiddos to determine if they would be appropriate for group services at this time. And that went on for quite a while. We are actually in the process right now, this last month, this month, and the next, in increasing our weekend and group services for children that, again, are going through kind of a nursing assessment to determine that they are safe to be in kind of a larger group setting and relaxing a little bit on some of our numbers for those programs. So families are wanting that service. So it's not that we are, that we don't have people that are interested. It has been more out of an abundance of caution. We are seeing in our childcare, our typical childcare program, continued reduction in services. It is slowly growing, and we anticipate as more and more people are vaccinated and returning to more typical work schedules, that we'll continue to see growth in that. We're a little unsure how summer will be, if people will choose to take the summers off or if they will enroll in preparation for the school year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your presentation and being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, next we'll move on. We have a report from Veterans Affairs. Good morning, Brett.
Hey, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, all right. Good morning, board. I've got a short report here, and I'll just kind of go through and just touch on the highlights of it, if that's okay. It's our third quarter, so January 1st to March 31st. Reading from the commission, Monty, Nick, Luke, Pat, and Amy. During the quarter, one veteran was eligible for rent assistance, and that was $600. Three veterans came in for utilities assistance. That was $886.54. And one family for funeral assistance, $1,472.44. During the, so the total there for county assistance was $2,958.98. For the quarter, though, we seen 137 veterans and/or surviving spouses. And then below there, I just kind of have the breakdown, 113 men, and there was 24 women in that group. And then below there, as you can see, I broke down how many served during World War II, going clear down to surviving spouses of veterans. So that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Our numbers picked up a little bit since we were able to be open over here. And so I expect for that to continue now. And so I just open that up if the board has any questions for me.
Have any questions? Supervisors? No? No? No questions on this particular quarterly report?
All righty. All right, have a great day. Have a great meeting.
Thanks, Brett. Next, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. I move approval of the amendment 13. A second. The moved in second and basal, or excuse me, Merkin.
Aye.
basal.
Aye.
Headen's aye. Next, we'll move on to consideration of personnel actions. There is one correction. The new hire that says effective 4/21 at 1:00 p.m. for the treasurer's office, it should be changed, that should say 4/30, 2021.
I move we approve personnel action with the correction of treasurer's office for Amber Allwright, starting effective date 4/30/21.
There is second. Then moved in seconded, basal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headen.
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything from consent? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? There's a lot on it at this time. Do we have to double check? I move approval consent.
Second.
The moved in seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
basal.
Aye.
Headen's aye. Now we are down to public hearing items. And we have the first consideration of ordinance 292. It's the minimum requirement for tanning facilities. And I believe that Margaret's on the Zoom.
Hey, Matt, can you help me get my video up? Good morning. This is Margaret Janes. I'm the Environmental Health Department Director. I'm having trouble getting my video going. There I am. Thank you, Matt. I apologize. So I thought I would start off by giving you a little bit of history on the tanning inspection program. So in 2013, via a 28E agreement, we contracted with IDPH to conduct the inspections for the tanning program in Story County. And then in 2019, IDPH decided to discontinue that part of the contract because they did not have enough manpower to help support that program. So and then in 2020, IDPH stated that counties will need to establish local authority in order to continue the inspection program. And anything that we cast has to be at least as stringent as the statute. So the Board of Health discussed this quite a bit, and they really felt it was important to have a program that would inspect facilities for a minimum safety requirements. So today before you, we have the recommendation from the Board of Health to the Board of Supervisors to consider adopting this ordinance. And the purpose again would be minimum safety requirements for tanning facilities. Applicability, it would be for the entire county, including incorporated areas. Most of our tanning facilities are in Ames. We currently have about 20 businesses on the books throughout the county. The designated agency to enforce regulations is Environmental Health, my department. And we are adopting the state code 641, IAC, Chapter 46, minimum requirements for tanning facilities by reference so that if any changes occur to those, they automatically change in our ordinance. And then we are also allowed to adopt additional rules. And the Board of Health thought it was very important to also add a minors prohibited part of that ordinance. And they are recommending that no one under the age of 18 shall use any type of tanning device as defined in these regulations. So this does not affect privately owned tanning beds, only those ones that are commercially run. Does anyone have any questions?
Supervisors, any questions at this time? Or?
Yeah. How many, do we know now how many counties have enacted the local ordinances?
Scott County currently has, Scott County is the only one in the state that currently has one on the books. I think others are considering it. Scott County does not allow people under the age of 16 to tan, and then 17 and 18-year-old folks need parent or guardian's permission to tan.
What was the rationale of the Board of Health in not following that? And not doing the same thing as Scott County?
We had a stakeholders meeting, and the industry strongly suggested we follow Scott County's way of doing it. The Board of Health, they reached out to pediatricians, to dermatologists, and they strongly were encouraged to do the 18 and under not being allowed because of skin cancer is so dangerous. And that age group is very, very apt to use tanning facilities.
And Margaret, I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's under 18 is what the ban is for. So it's not 18 and older, it's under 18, so through the age of 17.
I'm sorry. So no one, so what the Board of Health is proposing is that no one under the age of 18 be able to use the tanning device.
Right.
Scott County has the 16, 17 with permission.
And do we know how that's working for Scott County?
Um, well, I guess I don't know. I've not heard of problems. That's a really good question.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing?
And I will contact Scott County and be able to report back to you for the second hearing of this ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand via Zoom or click star nine to be able to speak. And I believe that there's one person with that hand raised. Please state your name and what organization you're with when you speak.
Good morning. I'm Joe Levy. I am Director of Scientific Affairs for American Sun Tanning Association and Executive Director of the Educational Institute for Tanning Facilities, the International Smart Tan Network. Can you, can you see me and hear me? I'm sorry, I can't tell if that came through.
Hear you.
And I apologize. The Zoom interface on this is a little different than what I've used before, so I don't know how to activate my video.
Go down on the bottom left and hit the, hit the don't do sign on the video. Joe.
Okay, I'm just seeing a mute, unmute. I'm not seeing a video.
Do, mine says stop video or video. Can you just click on it or not?
Hold on, hold on, and then you should be able to in just a moment.
Oh, thank you. Now I see it. There we go. Excellent. Sorry about that.
And I will say, Joe attended our stakeholders meeting, and we really appreciate his input on this. Thank you so much for coming today.
I appreciate that, Director Janes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity for input. I identify myself as Joe Levy. 28 years ago, I started a research project on ultraviolet light and the complexities of what its relationship with permanent skin damage are. And that led to me developing training materials for indoor tanning facilities to help them teach sunburn prevention for people who choose to use sunbeds as a way to gradually acclimate them to sun exposure. So what is, what I learned back then in that research project in 1992 continues to be true today, that this is a really complex topic. Unlike other things that we call carcinogens, sunlight is the only thing on that list that humans need in order to live. It is a necessity, and we get less of it today that in any point in human history and our interactions with outdoor sun are more irregular than they have ever been because we don't spend as much time outdoors. In the last 50 years, skin cancer death rates have remained exactly the same, but we've seen obviously a spike in incidence rates, which is, is an interesting study. And why would the death rates not raise while the incidence rates have raised? But there are six times as many clinical dermatologists today as there were in 1970. And there's all sorts of complexity to this topic. As was mentioned, we have supported all along that the restrictions should be at age 16 and under because once a person is 16, they have the ability to drive. And we know that 41% of all sunbed usage today occurs in non-salon locations. And in a non-salon location, there's no professional operator to, who is trained by my program to set the exposure time to be in a non-burning dose. There's a lot of misconceptions about what you get from a sunbed. A sunbed is A sunbed is designed to deliver a non burning dosage of sunlight, of UV light, UVA and UVB, similar to outdoor sunlight. For instance, a session in a sunbed is going to range, the amount of energy you would receive would range between 124 and 624 joules of UV energy. A day outdoors at the Coralville Reservoir, I went to the University of Iowa, by the way, I should disclose that, would be in excess of 4,000 joules in the summer. So it is considerably higher dosage. And so the question of whether or not someone should use a sunbed, we think you're simply driving people who choose to use a sunbed to not have the ability to do so in a way where their dosage would be controlled by an operator. There are plenty of opportunities to use non salon location sunbeds. And the data show, the data that everyone who has looked at, all the studies that have been done on this topic, the epidemiology on this topic, if you separate it by where the sunbed is, it's the non salon sunbeds that are increasing the risks in those data sets, not the salon sunbeds. That is a really interesting nuanced topic, and it has to be communicated correctly to the public. What the data are all coming back to right now is that what we need to be concentrating on from a public health perspective is sunburn. And the CDC's data and the federal government's data on sunburn incidents are really compelling because five out of six teenage girls sunburn outdoors every year. And that number hasn't changed and has actually increased over the last decade and really over the last 40 years. Only 5% of teenagers use indoor tanning equipment today, and that number has actually decreased over the last decade. The decrease in usage in tanning equipment has not translated into that population having a lower incidence of sunburn outdoors. I sent you some material. One of the studies in it is actually a great meta analysis done by a team at the University of Iowa that of all of the data on sunburn, it shows that if you sunburn five times over the course of a decade, you increase your risk of melanoma 224%. That's a substantial increase related to burning. And so telling people they can't use a professional salon, there's no data that shows that that decreases the incidence of sunburn outdoors. And since this is, since sun exposure is something that humans need to treat this as a topic like tobacco, I think is inappropriate. And I've been an anti tobacco advocate and an American Cancer Society supporter and fundraiser my whole adult life. I'm very, very well versed in the epidemiology and the science on that topic. It's very much different than how can we approach this topic. So it's a really nuanced discussion of how do we effectively teach sunburn prevention? What we do at a professional facility is the first thing we do when a client comes in is we skin type them. There's a scale called a Fitzpatrick Skin Type. And I don't know if it's appropriate, since I'm not present. This is the Skin Type Form that we use. And we worked with Dr. Fitzpatrick to develop this and actually improved it at a conference at the American Society for Photobiology in 2002, so that we were able to identify, the most important thing is to identify people with what's called Skin Type 1. A Fitzpatrick Skin Type 1 person cannot tan without burning. And so we will not tan them in a professional salon. We teach them if, yeah, exactly. And so we are able to identify that. And so we teach you that if you want to get color, you need to use a sunless tanning product. And we teach how to use sunscreen appropriately outdoors. And that is something that nobody is really doing because as important as it is to use sunscreen, it's important to teach how to put the product on. It needs to be put on before you go outside if you're going to use it. So if you need to use sunscreen as a product to prevent sunburn, there's an appropriate way to use it. And that's more important sometimes than actually the product that you use. I'm getting into the weeds here. But my point is that we are an effective tool at helping to teach sunburn prevention for those who believe that some sun in their lives is an appropriate decision. The family absolutely should be involved in that. We have self imposed as a market that anyone under the age of 18 needs a parental consent signed in person in the store. And our members in Story County have done that and have self imposed an under 16 restriction as well. I have some additional material. I know I sent some material to you all ahead of this, and I didn't want to send too much. But I have some material on, we have a significant but kind of underground sort of alternate usage. There are many doctors who refer clients to tanning facilities to self treat skin conditions like psoriasis. The cosmetic effects of psoriasis are often treated by ultraviolet light. And sunbeds are very substantially similar to what is used in a dermatology clinic at a much lower expense and at much greater access. And so there's actually research on this published that referring clients to tanning facilities is actually effective to that. And so we do have some clients under the age of 18 who were referred by dermatologists to visit our stores. And again, that's a topic with nuance because we're not doctors, we're not clinics. But by following our protocols of cosmetic procedure, many of them receive relief at a substantially lower cost and at no cost to the medical system for their cosmetic skin conditions. And psoriasis is one of them. I'm going to send you, I had received a request from a congressman a few years ago on that topic. So I'm going to forward to you what I sent on that and some of the peer reviewed research and why that actually does work. And the dosages that we deliver are actually in many cases substantially lower than what a dermatologist delivers in a phototherapy unit. So sometimes it is preferential and it's more accessible for someone under the age of 18 to have that option to use our cosmetic service and to get that as a side effect of it. I actually have one member in New York State who started her tanning business because it was less expensive to start her salon than it was to treat her own psoriasis at Columbia Presbyterian Hospital in New York. It's a really fascinating subtopic, but it's one of those unintended consequences of what a total restriction would lead to. So I sent you a lot of material, and I appreciate you letting me go through this. I think we all need to work on sunburn prevention. And we have, since American Sun Tanning Association formed in 2013, we've reached out to all the public health agencies saying we're ready to talk about this topic and what is effective in terms of teaching sunburn prevention moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any questions for Joe? Or should we go on to see if there's other folks first before we?
Just one question. Did you present the same information to the Board of Health that you presented to the supervisors?
I think I actually presented a little more material today. That was a wonderful meeting that the staff put together. I think I sent you a little bit additional material today.
And also, I don't believe all of the Board of Health heard his presentation unless they went and listened to it on YouTube afterward. It was a stakeholders meeting that he presented at, not a Board of Health meeting. So Margaret, I don't think they all heard it, no.
Joel, I have a question for you. So you said you support the ban under the age of 16. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you for your question. Yes, that makes sense. You know, and it could be with a medical exemption, although there are very few people who are ever referred to us under the age of 16. I, the material I'm going to forward to you actually was one case in Nebraska. I think it was Lincoln, Nebraska, that a dermatologist referred a 14 year old for tanning facility treatments because there was no phototherapy clinic within 100 miles. And you know, that's something I think that could be probably addressed on a one off basis. But as I mentioned, at the age of 16, they're emancipated to drive, and so they can either go to a nearby county or they can find, as I mentioned, 41% of tanning units today are in non salon locations or in homes. An unintended consequence of the Affordable Care Act in 2010 was a 10% tax was put on tanning facilities to help pay for the Affordable Care Act. That closed several thousand mom and pop locations. We think up to 10,000 of the stores have closed today nationwide. All of that equipment went out onto the private market and is out there. You can find a sunbed on Craigslist or eBay for less than the cost of a cell phone right now.
Sure, sure. I guess my question was, so you are in support of your industries in support of the ban under the age of 16, not between the age, the under 18? And I'm just wondering what's kind of basically the skin differences between the age of 16 and the age of 18?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. I think that the answer to that is theoretical. I think under the age of 16, as I mentioned, it makes sense to us because that's the age that someone can go to a non salon location. Under the age of 16, you don't see a lot of that. In terms of skin maturity, it's theorized that the younger you are, the more sensitive your skin is. But there's really no data to support that. I think what we need to focus on is sunburn prevention for people of all ages.
Great, thank you. We do have somebody else who would like to speak at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Supervisor Faisal had a question for you first. I'm sorry.
So as far as employees following the Fitzpatrick scale, how, do you know how businesses ensure that their employees are actually following that? If they identify that they identify people's skin type? And then if there is a type 1, that they are actually following those guidelines and not having them tanned?
Thank you. That's an excellent question. The market sort of dictates following that because the worst ad for a tanning facility would be to have someone sunburn. That's not a good look for anyone. It's not a professional look. And so since a type 1 would not be able to tan without burning, it makes no sense to tan a type 1 in a salon. Since many of our stores offer alternatives, offer product that cosmetically offers either a spray or a lotion product that is a self tanning type product, it just makes sense from a standpoint for us to advocate for that rather than to burn an individual.
Would it not also make sense to offer that option to people who are between 16 and 18?
Thank you. Yes, and that certainly is an option for people under 16 to 18. The difference between a spray tan or a lotion that essentially stains the dead epidermis of the skin is that that doesn't provide any photo protection. A tan in combination with sunscreen is more effective at preventing sunburn than just the sunscreen alone. It essentially multiplies the effectiveness of sunscreen, and that's your body's natural protection against burning. And so many people want to activate that. One of the main reasons people come to tanning facilities this time of year is that they're building a acclimation so that their sunscreen will be more effective for vacations.
All right, we've got a hand raised for another person to speak for the public hearing. Margaret, I'm going to wait to get the other person to speak for the public hearing, and then I'll let you respond.
Okay.
So.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you please state your name and who you're with?
Yeah, this is, my name is Wade Teslow, and I am with Sun Tan City. I own two tanning salons in Ames. And I just wanted to, you know, I can't explain as good as Joe can all of the science that he has provided. So I appreciate Joe doing that. I just wanted to reiterate from a local salon owner standpoint that we are in favor. Currently, Iowa has no age restriction. And so, you know, we've always thought that that was foolish that, you know, technically anybody could come in and tan no matter what age they are. And so, you know, we are in support of the under 16 ban and then the 17 and 18 year olds being, or 16 and 17 year olds being able to tan with parent permission for the reasons that Joe explained. So that's really all I wanted to say is just that as a tanning salon owner in Ames, I support the Scott County ordinance that they had written, so.
Thank you. Get it back to Faisal.
So for the signed permission forms from the parents, are they required to come in every time with the child and sign that in person? Or is it kept on file?
I can answer that. It's not every time. It's just a permission form that's kept on file.
Is there a photocopy of a driver's license or anything kept with it?
Yeah, the parent would actually have to come in. We wouldn't just take a form from the 16 or 17 year old. So yes, the parent would have to come in and show, you know, that they are, you know, the parent of the child and then sign the form that they give permission.
And how old do you have to be to work in your salon?
Can you, I didn't hear the question. Can you repeat it?
How old does someone have to be to work in this salon?
Yeah, we require people to be 18 years old to work.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea what percentage of your clientele are under the age of 18?
It's, I don't have an exact number of that, but it's not, you know, it's not a huge part of our clientele. I would, if I had to make an educated guess, I would say, you know, maybe around 10%.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak during the public comment time? Margaret, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to reply to one of Joe's comments. As far as identifying a skin type, all of the operators that work at tanning facilities, they are required to take training every five years. And part of that is learning how to identify skin types and set the timer accordingly, if you will. So that is addressed, and that is part of the inspection that we do to make sure that those folks are following that procedure.
Thank you. Anything else? Before I close the public hearing? Okay. All right, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. Supervisors, discussion?
I know that melanoma skin cancer is very serious. I struggle with feeling like we're over regulating. I think if a parent goes in with a 16 year old and signs for them to tan, I, that would be for the parent and the child. I don't know so much that it's, they'll go someplace else. I mean, they will go someplace else, but they'll go someplace else regardless of whether there's a restriction or not. They're going to go where they can. I know, I think setting the minimum age at 16 and requiring parental permission between 16 and 18 is more appropriate than a flat out ban.
I tend to agree because, and I'm surprised, but I was just thinking the fact that there are regulations, they do this skin types, and I don't know the system is perfect, but they are, and also setting it for a certain amount of time. When you think of a teenager tanning at home, getting a sun lab and tanning themselves, and I know from personal experience, you can burn yourself. and I know from personal experience, you can burn yourself. And you always think, you know, oh, I'll do more than this. So I, and I think that's just an age, particularly with aging prompts, all the things going on in that age range. I think there will be people who will tan regardless. So maybe, I guess I'm agreeing with you. Maybe if we have the parental control, and I know things can be, you know, signatures can be forged, games can be played. We all know that. But I think most people will not do that. Most people will follow the regulations. So I would prefer to see a regulation similar to Scott County's.
I guess my comments, I listened in on the stakeholders meeting, and they did have, if I recall, I think it was two people from the industry, sun tanning industry, and two dermatologists who were on, who've been working on, actually trying at the state level to get legislation to essentially ban it for under 18. I also reached out to the American Cancer Society and got information from them on tanning facilities, the risks, seeing the rise in melanoma, particularly run young people, understanding that, I've got some documentation here that said that in May of 2014, the FDA reclassified tanning devices from a class-one device or minimal potential for harm to the user to a class-two device, or moderate or high potential for harm to the user. So that gives me some pause. The question comes as to how much UV light is okay. You know, we talk about, you know, the need to make sure that, you know, you're wearing your sunscreen, or you're not wearing sunscreen in a tanning bed to help minimize, you know, potential burns. I've known particularly young women that have gone, young girls that have gone tanning and have, you know, gotten burned. Now, some of the technology may have changed over the last, you know, eight, 10 years or so, but that has occurred and stuff. So, you know, when we're looking at cancer rates increasing, you know, what can we do to help provide some protection against harmful UV radiation and the role that indoor tanning plays in it? I understand what you're both are saying on the under-16 ban. I think that was legislation that was in the Iowa legislature this year. I don't believe it has gone anywhere. It has stalled. Again, I know when I said in the legislature worked on the under-18 legislation. So, you know, and I've just, for me, I just kind of look at the health risk, what's going on now with the exposure, not only what happens now, but, you know, future-wise. What does that exposure have done to young men or women, children, I guess you'd say if they're under 18, or children, in the long term? That's a concern I have of, you know, where those youths will be at that particular time.
With that, let's see if any additional comments? I'm kind of hearing from both of you, you would prefer, it sounds like you would need to go back to the Board of Health to reconsider.
I would, and I don't know that we need a motion, but I think I would ask the Board of Health to think about that, whether they would be wanting to return it back to us, more like Scott County's 16 and 17 being with parental consent.
Do we think that could be in a motion to do that?
Lucy, what do you think? Is your action enough?
Oh, you're asking me a parlementarian question?
Yes.
Because I am not a qualified parliamentarian, although I pretend to be one sometimes. This is the first, you published this ordinance, this is the first reading. I don't know, I'm looking at Leanne, who's done more ordinances than I have over the years.
But this better be, probably be better as a motion to go back to the Board of Health?
Yeah.
It's kind of loud, because I don't, but I think it should be a hold on the motion.
To refer it back to the Board of Health?
I mean, I think it's always clear to do with this motion, whether it's required or not.
Thank you.
And Margaret, and we have two people with their hands raised. Even though I would say those full of comments are no, but Margaret has hers raised as well.
Margaret?
Yes.
That's the public hearing. But I didn't know if you had a comment in regards to this, my question that I was just saying here on the reading of the ordinance?
I'm wondering if you could, if the Board of Supervisors could adopt something less than what the Board of Health is recommending? So, for example, adopt the Scott County one, or if it has to go back to the Board of Health? And if it does, does the Board of Supervisor want a special meeting? Or wait until June 1st, which is our next scheduled Board of Health meeting?
I don't see that we have Ethan on the line for the legal interpretation.
When we had other things, such as the face covering ordinance, we had to send it back to them because we're, they're making the recommendation and we're, I think, either going up or down on it.
Right.
So I guess what we would probably be looking at doing is asking them to consider whether they would want to change it.
So do we have to, do we have to note it down and then make a motion?
I don't think so.
Or do we just make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we return ordinance number 292, minimum requirements for tanning facilities, back to the Board of Health with a request that they revise their recommendation to be in line with Scott County's.
Which is the.
Ban under-16 parental permission between 16 and 18.
Or 16 through 17.
16 through 17, yeah.
And no one under 16 allowed, correct?
Correct.
I would second the motion. Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Faisal? Merkin? Edens, no. Okay, so it's going to be referred back to the Board of Health then. Thank you, Margaret.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to additional items. Discussion and consideration of revised driver's license and insurance coverage verification policy.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Melissa.
So we originally adopted this policy, the county did, back in January of 2017. I am not asking to make any changes to the actual requirements. I am asking just to change some administrative procedures. Currently, we require proof of insurance. You know, if it's monthly, if they think if their insurance is monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, annually, we kind of base it on there. I'm asking to do it once a year, annually. And we will do this prior to the beginning of the fiscal year. We'll run it in conjunction with our open enrollment period. So it's real simple. It's getting to be kind of a burden on HR to reach out and get that all, get the documentation. There's a form we've added just to have them sign and submit a copy of their declaration page, which is what we are currently getting. So more administrative changes just to ease on the burden.
I just have a question. Sure. It's insurance, like, excuse me, my insurance card, like, twice a year and stuff. What you're saying, you just want to get it for once a year?
We'll just verify it once a year, and there are other counties that do that.
So what if somebody's insurance, they let their insurance latch them?
They're required to notify us, and that's what this whole, the policy does say. If it's not intact, they need to notify us.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay.
I've moved that we approved your revised driver's license and insurance coverage verification policy and sent it out for seven-day review.
I'm asking for the seven-day to be.
Wait, the seven-day review. Pardon me.
That's okay.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have discussion and consideration of quotes for paging systems at administration and human resources buildings. Is that Barb?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
So this is a continuation of the project that we started at the Justice Center last year. And when we were looking at paging systems, we had four criteria items. The first one, the most important, that it be separate from our network. You may be aware that we can page through our phone system. However, it doesn't reach like the hallways and the bathrooms and things. So we wanted a complementary system that would be separate from that that we could use for emergency paging. The second criteria was we wanted to make sure that all areas were covered. And the third, we wanted it to be easy to use and to test. And the fourth was that we wanted it to be flexible so that we could add or subtract to it if the need arose. So we did reach out to the vendor who had done our paging system at the Justice Center and came back with a quote that was a little higher than expected. And so we, per our usual way of doing things, if it's over $25,000, we get a quote from a second vendor. So we did reach out to one of the other vendors who had quoted the justice system, paging system, and found quite a bit of a difference. And I guess my recommendation to the Board, if you approve, would be to go with the EMBARK quote and installation. When comparing the two, one of the biggest significant difference was the labor cost. No, EMBARK did break down the hours. Marco did not. And just to be clear, we started out on the same playing field with both vendors. They both did a walkthrough of both buildings, and we submitted the same information to both of them. So we felt this was their best shot at giving us what they felt it would take to do the project. One of the significant differences, even though the labor was a lot different, we noticed that with the Marco, the speakers that would cover the area that we wanted covered, their speaker count was a lot less than EMBARK. And if you would look at the EMBARK quote, you'd see that they did put a red dot on all the areas in the buildings that were covered. And I think they did a really good job. So I would just ask the Board to approve the EMBARK quote and move forward with that. We did have some issues with the Justice Center installation with the vendor that was subcontracted to do the wiring and really didn't want to go down that road again.
Barb, did you send us the quote separately?
I submitted them to Shelley.
They're not on the agenda, so why don't you tell us what the numbers were?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was confidential information. So Shelley was given the two copies. So, yes, I will briefly break down those. So overall, let's start with EMBARK. So for the administration building, for for the administration building, EMBARK had quoted $31,000. That would be equipment and labor. And Marco had quoted us $159,000. We're the same. Did you find it, Lisa? I'm sorry.
I did a quick run to see, and I'm not seeing it.
$151,000, is that what you said?
So I guess, let me backtrack a little bit. So for both buildings, for the materials and for the installation, EMBARK had quoted us $60,758. And Marco had quoted us $159,671. So there was about $100,000 difference. And when you look at the equipment costs versus the labor, it all broke down to labor. And I do know that a lot of Marco's texts come from Minnesota, which was probably the issue there.
I know you're familiar with Marco because they do copyers, just math. What do you know about EMBARK?
EMBARK IT had, and we've met with them. As I mentioned before, we did look at their proposal for the Justice Center. But they've also implemented what's at emergency management. They implemented their video system in there. Keith can't say enough good things about them. I've heard other people recommend EMBARK, so I'd like to give them a shot at this. They've been very good about submitting quotes for all of our projects. And I'm very confident in the project manager that I've met with and with their technical staff. They've really been excellent. And really, the only reason they've lost out in recent projects was a little bit of the cost difference and some of the things they were able to offer. I think they really, they shone when they presented this quote. I really, I liked the detail they gave and the additional questions and the flexibility of their system.
Barb, if you don't mind, I have some more questions. This is for Bull Pete. Admin, though, they're in the Justice Center, correct? Just those two?
Admin and HSC.
Admin and HSC, okay. Kind of feel like we're, we don't have any information in front of us, so we have to figure out what we need to know, okay? So $60,000 EMBARK versus $159,000 Marco.
Correct.
You were presenting, you were saying that one thing was that we would have speakers in places where the phones didn't reach, but we also will have speakers where we have phones because we want this to work even if our network is down, correct?
Correct. Yes, correct. And I did reach out to department heads and managers to get some input on what they felt they needed in their areas. So we took that into consideration when we talked to these vendors about what our needs were.
Okay. And do they, will they work on the same timeframe? How will they get this installed?
They will do one building and then the other.
So other than the cost difference and the fact that EMBARK has more speakers, and we don't see them yet, so I don't know how many it is, but more speakers than Marco, what other differences are there?
There aren't a lot. Those are the main two. The only other difference, as I mentioned, we weren't 100% happy with what was done at the Justice Center. There was a breakdown in communication, and that stalled the project. And when the crew came to do the wiring, they asked us for instruction. And we felt a little put off by that. We didn't know what had been given to them. And then they left in the middle of the project to do another project for someone else. And then when they came back, they had the wrong speaker casings. So there were quite a few things that I think could have been prevented. And despite the cost and the equipment consideration, I'd like to give EMBARK a chance to do this. They did an excellent job at emergency management, setting up their system.
And Marco with $69,000?
I have $65,000 for EMBARK.
And Marco with $159,000?
That's what I got. Okay, just want to make sure I got it.
Yeah, there's too good of a.
I thought I saw the 69 in there, but I might have been looking.
Okay, Barb, one more time. How much is EMBARK?
According to the quote that I have in front of me, that you should also have, their total for both buildings is $60,758.81.
So $60,000.
Okay, okay.
And this is really in line with what we paid to have the Justice Center done.
The paperclip was caught with the other papers. I didn't see it initially.
Are there any other questions?
We're looking at, we found a proposal, and we're looking through it now.
Okay, great.
When it's confidential, it's only in the folder.
Yeah, I got that, but I looked in there, like, the paperclip. Paperclip kind of took. Yeah.
And not all the supervisors always look through the folder. Usually it's the chair does. And maybe it'd be good if it's studied. They're on an agenda to clue us that there is some documentation someplace. I don't know how that would be done, but, yeah. some documentation someplace, and I don't know how that would be done, but, yeah.
Just, yeah.
It does say both confidential.
Yes.
Yeah.
Both confidential, just, yeah, like I said, I did look in the folder, I just didn't see it.
Well, I don't think I have any other questions, but Supervisor Basil's looking at the proposal, through the proposal, so I would be, I have to be concerned just over the job, it sounds like MARCO did, period. Okay. I would move that we recommend, I would move that IT move forward with the EMBARK quote for paging system at admin and human resources buildings.
I would second the motion.
Human Service Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, Human Service Center. This is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is how it's written here.
That is a little confusing.
Okay, second, then seconded, sorry. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Adams? Aye. All right, thank you, Board. Okay, next we have discussion and consideration of request to an Ames Urban Fringe Plan land use and class map for the area along Highway, Lincoln Highway and 500th Avenue. Amelia?
I don't know, can I raise our hand if I can? Good morning.
Hey.
Hi. Oh, I see, I'm coming up as Stephanie, my apologies. I have a very short presentation, so I will share my screen. So these properties are along North 500th Avenue and Lincoln Highway, the entire section that you see highlighted on your screen is proposed to be annexed by the City of Ames, which has led to this request. So, the properties that were highlighted in the previous screen, I've highlighted here on the Ames Urban Fringe Plan land use framework map. The northern half about is designated urban residential, the southern half is designated as highway oriented commercial, and there's a convenience commercial node, I've just called out this smaller area on the larger maps, you can see, you know, the variety of different designations, there must be 12 or so different land use framework map designations in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. Each land use framework map designation fits into one of three land use class categories, and so we have this other map that we don't generally use with the Ames Urban Fringe Plan except during annexation requests, that shows how each of these land use framework map designations, so urban residential, highway oriented, commercial, fits into a larger land use class, and so they're either rural service and ag conservation, rural urban transition area, or urban trans- service area. And so you can see again on this call out here, while the urban residential area that's proposed to be annexed is in the urban service land use class, highway oriented commercial area is in the urban, rural urban transition area. And so what that, this means is, per our 28E agreement, we are to amend properties designated rural urban transition to the urban service area prior to annexation, and so the request before you is to do just that. You won't be taking action on the request today, as the first step in the process, we need a majority of the cooperators in the fringe plan to agree to allow an application for this amendment to be made, and then we'll bring the actual amendment request back at a later time, once we've taken it to our planning and zoning commission for their recommendation as well. So I've highlighted our recommendation below, which is to allow the applicant to move forward in application to make this amendment. I'm happy to take any questions.
If there's any questions for Amelia.
I don't have any questions, I have no questions. I would move that we allow the applicant to forward, excuse me, an application for an Ames Urban Fringe Plan land use class map for the area shown in the section A and B, from the rural slash urban transition area to the urban service area land use class.
I'm second. Okay, then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I gotta look at my papers, maybe I'll kind of move it right now. Okay, I'm sorry, looks like we have, next is the, right, is it the consideration of the change order with Manash?
Department report.
Oh, okay, sorry, some of my papers are here, so we're onto department reports, I'm apologize, there's no department reports. Other reports, we've got our fiscal 21 quarterly financial report from Lisa Markley.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Very briefly, the, overall, our, our budget, our financial information is looking good, right now, we have three depart, only three departments that are over 75% of the year, and that's mainly just because of seasonal type things, along with the fact that payments were made, large payments were made to get us to that point. Some departments have not spent hardly anything, mental health, that, that large payment's going to be in June, and our debt service payments are all at the end of May, so the non-departmental looks kind of low also. So overall, we're at 56% of our expenditures as of March 31st. The ending fund balances are shown there, and where we're at for year-to-date percent of expenditures, as you can see, those are all looking underneath the 75% of the year also. We do have, I did list out what was, was still restricted with Storycom, what's committed for, for energy transfer funds, and what's still assigned, so I pulled those numbers for you. For expenses, oh, excuse me, for, for revenues, we have seven to five, seven departments that are over 75% of the revenues as of March 31st, which is really good, overall, we're at 86% revenues, so the revenues are coming in fairly strong. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. No questions, thank you.
Okay, so as good as this looks, I'll be seeing you next week, because I'm going to start the budget amendment process, so the budget looks good, but we're going to amend it anyway.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, anything upcoming agenda item? Not seeing at this point, okay, this time we'll open up for public forum two, number two, comments on the public, on items not on the agenda, the Board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meeting slot, but may do so in the future, we'll open the public meeting, we'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone would like to make comments, please raise your hand or hit star nine if you'd like to make comments during this particular time. Seeing anything, man? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum at this time, move out the liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, announcements from the supervisor.
Tomorrow, I will have the historical alliance in the afternoon, I have an emergency management commission meeting in the evening, I will be out Thursday and Friday, so back in next month.
I have a Story County Housing Trust Fund meeting this afternoon, Serhod tonight. Tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, thank you, everybody, who supports, supports us and keeps everything moving. And then the historical alliance meeting, have a boost meeting on Thursday, Story County Economic Development Group meeting Thursday morning, and Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Center on Friday.
And I have the thing with the historical alliance tomorrow, I have a HERDA meeting Thursday morning, then the Story County Economic Development, and then CICS Friday, early Friday, I have an ABDC meeting, if anyone had the legislative forum on their calendar, I got an email that the legislative forum was canceled for this Friday and will be rescheduled for the May one, and then I do have on my calendar for Monday, the NAPO High Performance Professional Development begins in the morning, and then I do have a MICA meeting Monday night as well. All right, is there any, anything else? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Second, moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.